Hello, everyone.
Hello.
We are coming to you Sunday night, June 7th, and a tropical storm advances towards the Gulf Coast. Lovely. But, um.
Awesome.
Another storm that's brewing.
Well, this is supposed to be a particularly intense hurricane season.
Yeah.
Cannot wait.
Thank you. I'm a climate change. Thank you oil companies.
Wonderful. I cannot wait for Sandy 2.0. I can't wait to see what damage that does to my life this time around.
Um. Speaking of oil, Russian oil spill is a big deal and we have not.
Yes, it has not been covered at all. We should talk about that on the podcast tomorrow.
Yeah.
Today, today, right now, for a little bit, we're going to talk about the big news that you can see on the screen. A majority, a veto-proof supermajority of the Minneapolis City Council.
Seventy-five percent.
Yes, nine, in this article says nine out of 12. There seems to be for some, for some goddamn reason, confusion as to how many people are on the Minneapolis City Council? Because I've seen it announced, as in Ethan said, you saw it was announced like 12 out of 14, but obviously here it says nine out of 12. Either way, regardless.
No, I saw, so when there was, there was a viral tweet that circulated about how voting is not the only way to change these problems, or not, I mean, not the only way, like not the, like voting, like voting alone will not solve these problems and.
Yeah, because obviously voting didn't do this protesting and literally rioting and burning down a police precinct did this.
Yeah, um, but, um, but it said 13 out of 14 of the city council are Democrats and one is a Green. So that was indicating that there was a 14-person city council and here it says 12. I don't know if two people are like abstaining or something. I don't know what the situation is.
Yeah, either way, nine out of 12 have said, according to this article, either way, I've seen it all, in every case reported, that a supermajority of the city council has said, we're going to disband the police department of Minneapolis, which is huge. That's crazy. That's something that, you know, people, some people, you know, activists, when Black Lives Matter first started out, were talking about back when this all started.
Which was way on the fringe back then.
Yeah.
Way on the fringe.
Yeah, it was highly marginal. And now, a whole, Minneapolis is a pretty big city. It's also a state capital. Yeah, in the midwestern city.
Well, St. Paul is the capital.
Whatever. That's weird to me. Um, I don't, yeah.
It's a weird, like, two-city metro area.
Yeah, that's, yes, I legitimately thought, I don't know, I don't know, I was under the impression that Minneapolis was the state capital then. Um, that's embarrassing. Um, it makes sense. Indianapolis is the capital of Indiana, you know.
And Ohio, Polish is the capital of Ohio.
Shut up. But the Minneapolis Police Department, um, as we know, you know, it's one of these very problematic police departments, highly compromised from top to bottom, to its foundation, to its core, there is a problem. This was what people were talking about with the Ferguson Police Department, where like, the Ferguson Police Department should have probably, should probably be disbanded. People were talking about, you know, if we're even gonna reform the police, we just had, we even were talking in that context. Because I mean, we can get into this, we can move into this, the idea of police abolition, defun, you know, defund the police, abolish the police, these things versus each other, also what they really mean. But, um, you know, obviously, this isn't, you know, like, police abolition. And I don't think, and I think part of the thing is, we have to admit that abolishing the police is something we're not going to have in a class society, because police are like a third-order thing. They are, you know, something that exists because in a class society, the ruling class needs an enforcer class that exists to enforce the, you know, um, legal social order.
And if I may also say that another reason, perhaps a secondary one, but I think an important one nonetheless, that we will never, not ever, sorry, but never under the current, you know, system abolish the police, is that that, um, in large part due to the capitalist underpinnings, kind of like the base superstructure Marx talked about here of our society, people's collective imaginations of public safety beyond police is fairly limited. And I've seen that by a lot of well-known people online, even people that I know that are not by any means right-wingers, but they do not see how we can possibly be safe without the police. And this is obviously coming from all white people, but is, it is, it is, it is a problem. And people will think, you know, the police are dismantled, is it gonna be, it's like Somalia? Of course not. There's people who need to be educated in that way. Yeah.
And there's a lot of places where, you know, police are, police, policing is bad. Policing does, especially in the United States, have racist discriminatory effects.
And classist, not to be.
Yes, and police is necessary, yeah, police, policing is necessarily, I don't necessarily want to say discriminatory, but necessarily has, serves an oppressive class function. That is the number-one thing that it does universally across the board in every single country on the planet. In this country in particular, there is a huge racism problem with it too, that is deeply integral to the institution. Due to the fact that, you know, we are, we are, we Americans are all little fishies, you know, swimming in a sea of racism. It's the atmosphere that we breathe in, the water that we swim through. It's, you know, because it's, I don't want to use the whole metaphor, if it's in the DNA of our country, but it's something that's very, very integral to the very structure of American society. It's something that's been with us since, like, race, the very concept of it, like, basically, like, at least, well, obviously, you know, each, you know, Latin America versus North America have two very different, you know, conceptions of race. So obviously, our conception of race originated here. But, you know, like, the American colonies were sort of like the laboratory and the garden in which the plants of racism and of race as a whole, as an idea itself, grew and sort of blossomed into what they are. Because, you know, we, we, we had to create these racial categories, not we, but you know, the colonial elite had to create these categories, both had to write them into law, codify them into social practice, that they, in order to sustain the sort of division of labor in the colonial economy between masters, free workers and slaves, and also to, you know, justify the continued extermination and displacement of native peoples. That is what had, that's why that existed. There was a practical reason for those things, for those, for the idea to be created. And so policing necessarily, obviously, because as we know, people trace this history back, you know, the modern police, the idea of the modern police department, the modern police force dates back to like, you know, industrializing England in the sense of police as we know them now. But we also know that policing as a practice in the United States of law enforcement, the system of law enforcement in the United States dates back specifically to also playing this dual role of also the first police, police forces being assembled and organized in the big cities in the north through industrialization, but also like southern police departments in particular trace their heritage back to obviously slave patrols. Those are the first thing akin to a police force in a lot of southern states. That, you know, the people's job was to go out and round them up. And I think, and this is why, this is where like, you know, I don't want to, I don't hate people who are out there going like, abolish the police, because I get it. When you realize an institution, like, when you look at an institution from a sort of moral perspective like that and you see that has the, has certain things at its core that you feel very strongly are morally wrong, and I'm gonna say, I'll even, and I'll grant, because I, I think it's a little, in my opinion, yeah, it's a little, in my opinion, yeah, sure, morally wrong, but it's also a little hard to talk about, you know, the morality of things like this when they are structures and institutions that are integral, institutions that are integral to the structure of a society. That, you know, police, you know, the institutions of American policing may be fundamentally, may have racism as an integral and fundamental part of them, but they're also, but it's also a necessary component of at least a modern class society.
Yeah.
So I think, you know, um, obviously, they do that many, because obviously, you know, like, even if you're, and even, you know, regardless of police abolition and that discussion, there is, um, the fact that even if you're talking about reforming the police, you have, even if you're just, you know, the average liberal, even like the average American who's not even entirely political, or doesn't even know where they lie, wouldn't self-identify as a liberal probably if you asked them. There's a general sense that like, you know, if we're gonna, that there's a need to reform the police. If you're just looking at it from the perspective of, we need to reform policing as an institution. It's necessary, it's important, it's good to have, we need it, you know, all that jazz. Then we need, if you're the normal person who believes that, which is my main problem with people going around right now, talking about how we need to abolish the police, um, just get rid of all of it entirely right now, or using that as some sort of motto for whatever it is that they are proposing. The normal person doesn't think like that. The normal person, the average American is probably thinking, you know, probably, you know, every, every, you ask anybody, they've met at least one asshole cop that they really don't like. And they would probably admit to you that policing as a profession is gonna draw in, naturally just draws in terrible people who are prone to power tripping. But.
Not always.
Not always. Obviously, not every cop is that person, but I'm saying policing as a profession.
Disproportionately, yes.
Draws those people in because it appeals to them directly. It also, of course, appeals to people, because there's obviously a lot of police who, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of gray area and a lot of overlap here where there are racist cops who are not always power-tripping assholes. Maybe there are, there are racist cops, there are people who genuinely join the police force because they genuinely believe they are gonna be upholding the public safety and serving their community. But they're a little right, but, you know, they're at least.
It's a white community.
Yeah, but yeah, maybe they're, maybe they're racist and maybe, you know, there's, you know, there's unconscious bias and all that stuff that people talk about. Not gonna go into that right now, because obviously, that's a complicated thing, you know, who's, who is and who isn't actually racist, or what does it mean to actually be racist? But there's a lot, but, you know, there's probably a bunch of racist people who don't join the police because I, because, you know, having power over other people gives them a thrill. There's probably people joining the police because they're racist and they think the threat to public safety is non-white people or poor people or both of those things. And maybe also, there's some people who are power-tripping assholes, who are not really super racist. They would eas, they would easily get their rocks off beating the shit out of some upper-middle-class white kid. As they would, yeah, there, there's a, there's a sort of matrix you could probably make out of this. But it's sort of besides the point that I'm trying to make, which is that even if you want to reform, just plain old reform the police, there are certain police departments you kind of have to admit, like, yeah, we have to scrap that whole police department, tops to bottom, it's compromised. It's unworkable. This particular department is not reformable. And the thing with the Minneapolis Police Department and a lot of police departments in a lot of cities were, you know, cities that may, that have, you know, fairly high crime rates relative. Obviously, there's a pretty low crime rate in the United States in general, I mean, relative to that low crime rate. Um, there's some places that have like a higher, slightly higher than average, there's certain, and obviously, a lot of cities do for a lot of socioeconomic reasons.
And neighborhoods of in cities.
But it's a lot, but though, it tends to also be those police departments in particular that are the most in need of just being fully disbanded. And then if you want to have a police department there, then you gotta build it back up from scratch. It's like you're a reformist.
Interject here, um, the NYPD, I read today, has a budget that is not truly known. It has a budget opacity similar to the FBI or the CIA and includes all kinds of surveillance and operate, other operations, which has gone far beyond the, what, even in the most racist imaginations, what policing was intended to be, even that, it's far beyond that.
Well, yeah, because the NYPD, I would say, is probably one of those police departments that needs to be torn down.
Oh, sorry.
And if you believe that you should replace it with a police department, and here's the, and like, here's the thing. There's a lot of people who, you know, we should be skeptical, skeptical, and we should be watchful over the Minneapolis Police Department, over Minneapolis and what happens. You know, because who knows, maybe, maybe this goes nowhere. Maybe there's some bizarre legal mechanism that the governor's gonna pull that stops this. Maybe that, you know, weepy little, I really, really don't like this Jacob Frye kid who's the mayor of Minneapolis.
He's basically a kid, right?
He looks like a weepy 14-year-old boy. He looks like he's gonna cry all the time and has like this like curly mop of hair that makes him look like a schoolboy.
Thirty-eight, okay.
Thirty, he's thirty-eight and he looks like a, he, he looks like a little fancy lad. He looks like a little bitch boy. I really don't like him. And I wouldn't put it past someone like him or like this asshole governor of Minnesota who has lied repeatedly about the protests, that basically say, oh, you're gonna get rid of the police department? I'm just gonna send in the National Guard to take over their job.
Exactly. It's exactly what I was gonna say.
I'm just gonna milit, you know, forget about police militarization. I'm gonna have, literally have like the de facto military police your city for you while you don't, while you don't have a police department. And you guys are figuring out whatever you're gonna replace it with. And, you know, I would say for people to not rush to conclusions and say, hey, this is stupid, this is pointless, I don't even care. They're just gonna do, you know, the quote-unquote "community policing" that everybody supposedly, that a lot of Democratic mayors say they're going to introduce and they don't actually introduce. Community policing is a term that's basically been gutted and rendered meaningless by the fact that every time somebody says we're gonna do it, they don't actually do what that means, which is you exclusively hire police from a specific community to be the police in that community.
Which is what we talked about Friday, is one of the potential solutions to a public safety in a post-police society.
Yeah.
Which is not even where we're, yeah, yeah, obviously.
Yeah, which obviously, you know, isn't really politically realistic, which is part of the reason why I think we should not celebrate, but maybe, you know, let ourselves give up.
Oh, yeah, I'm gonna, I have a glass of wine because of this, so.
Yeah, but maybe we should just mutter out like a little bit of, like, a little bit of, yay, like, just, just that.
Well, we're seeing, we're seeing already.
Because this, this city council just said that we're gonna dismantle a police department, a police department that, like, once again, it's overwhelmingly majority white. Most of those people, most of the people in this police department, specifically the overwhelming majority of white police on this force, don't even live in the city. They have repeatedly, Philando Castile, that was in Minneapolis, right, or was in St. Paul, it was somewhere in Minnesota.
It was somewhere in the Twin Cities area, yeah.
In that area. The police in this area have like a history. There's a problem. There is a long-term systemic problem that is like endemic to the, to the whole department. And they're like, like clearly, something is really, really off here. And something clearly, you know, like, you can even make this argument just based off the fact that, that like, the county DAs, whether it's Amy Klobuchar or whoever it has been since her, has not prosecuted any single cop for brutality in that city for the past few years. Even though that there have obviously been a ton of complaints and accusations against them and we know that they have now, more than once in this area, the police here have made national headlines with their murders and their brutality that there, and that they are, that they know they are gonna get away with it, that they know that they have carte blanche to do whatever they want because they know that none of them face any legal consequences. There are obviously a crap-ton of reforms we can do to try and make policing just a little more humane in the short term. Because obviously, we have to be honest here. And I do not, I, I do honestly not really fully understand this fascination with hashtag abolish the police.
Or abolish ICE.
Well, like, like abolish ICE is a different thing. That's totally a plausible political goal because ICE is really, really new, like, it was invented with the DHS.
Well, I think it's plausible, but maybe not.
Its existence, the constitutionality, in my opinion, of its existence is questionable. Its necessity is not at all a thing, but police abolition, like, we have to be honest. I, and it's weird to me because a lot of these people are DSA types, which like, the DSA types tend to be really, really big on, you know, radical reforms, short-term, big deal sort of, short-term things that advance the interests of the working class, but still within the framework of capitalism, but, you know, ultimately building up a socialist movement and getting somewhere else. All of a sudden, there's a bunch of these rose emoji people who are going like, let's abolish the police, as if that's the thing that they want to happen right now. And it's like, okay, maybe you should take a similar attitude, which is, there are short-term goals that are perfectly accomplishable and that are big, and that are big challenges to get to because of just how hard it is for Pete, for, well, specifically, a lot of white people to, but also just a lot of people in general. I imagine this is the same thing for like the majority of black people, to imagine policing that isn't what it is now. Because we've had what it is now, like, forever.
When I.
It's hard for people, it's not, we don't have an alternative within living memory. People don't actually have a frame of reference in terms of their personal experience or in the collective memory of the people around them. They need, so, you know, this is one of those situations where it's a big imaginative leap and saying something like, let's abolish all police now, will scare people into not taking that imaginative leap. We can bring them along on this imaginative leap by saying, let's demilitarize the police. Let's slash their budgets. Let's have less police. Let's make sure that there's all these jobs that people with guns shouldn't be doing, things that mental health care workers and social workers should be taking care of. People whose ranks have been gradually reduced and starved of funding and have had their pay cut for decades now as opposed to police who have had no cuts, in many cases have budget increases, whose budgets have kept pace with GDP growth, who have dramatically expanded their, the size and scope of what their authority is and their operations, what operations they do. We should be dramatically reducing their size and their scope, fully demilitarizing them. If they're, if they're to have guns at all, it should be like how in Ireland, they keep like a gun in the trunk, just in case. Or all the guns should be kept locked up in the station, a tiny amount of them, if there are any at all. You know, like, we, we, there are a lot of small pieces, there are lots, you know, you could call them small bore compared to outright abolition, which is something we're not going to get to for a long time until there is no longer a split between have and have-not, where there are have-nots who need to be policed. Because, you know, that's not me saying that has to happen, that's the fact that like, class society creates a need for that kind of institution and those institutions necessarily arise as a result. This is just a fact of reality. This just, just is. With that in mind, there are a bunch of achievable reforms, the one, like, the ones I just listed. You know, democratizing policing, having these neighborhood review boards that Black Panthers used to talk about. Talked about people were pretty radical and wanted to kind of like replace the police. The Black Panthers, who wanted to replace the police with basically volunteer forces overseen by democratically-elected commissions or review boards that oversee the operations and conduct of a police force that's entirely made up of volunteers from within the community. That is the kind of thing we're talking, that, you know, we can have. And obviously, they can be demilitarized and have really small budgets. And I say, when it comes to Minneapolis, we gotta see where this goes. This could just go in a totally like liberal, deradicalizing direction where they disband the department. And then, uh, you know, the, the, like we said earlier, the National Guard comes in, which is probably the most realistic scenario here, I'm not gonna lie. Like, that is probably the most realistic scenario. There's also, you know, what are all those police officers going to do? How are they going to react? They can be as scary of people as we've seen in New York when they feel like they're at war with their civilian government. This, we can see how this can go. And that's just like, you know, the, you know, the National Guard thing, the police fighting back thing, those options are not, you know, um, those are just external forces stopping this. Not even like, you know, like, maybe there's a handful of Democrats amongst this nine out of 12 supermajority who in their minds are thinking like, yeah, but I'm not gonna fight the veto if the mayor vetoes it. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna do that. I'm gonna change sides. We're gonna force them to a compromise. This is our radical position that we're taking so we can come to a compromise on like cutting their budget or disarming them or whatever. That, there's a lot of possibilities. There's a lot of directions that this can go in. But this is a huge step that this is now a part, now this is going to be a national conversation. Because obviously, this is gonna get picked up in the news. It's gonna have to be talked about. And people are gonna actually have to, this is important because now people are actually gonna have to start thinking about, what is an alternative to policing as we know it? What are alternative ways of providing for public safety? That's all I gotta say.
All right, um, I'll just say, uh, first of all, but earlier when I said abolish ICE, I meant to say abolish borders. Just had a little brain fart there. I was referring to the DSA.
Yes.
Yeah, um, this kind of reminds me of that, but, um, maybe not quite as radical, but still. And I was gonna say that this is an example that shows us why protests are important and why they are effective.
They break down a police precinct and now the city council is talking about getting rid of the police. That's, it's cool, that's, this is what we've been talking about, all of us on the left, about why protests like this are necessary, why, you know, you can't, why all the stupid libs going out there saying, go vote in November, as if this is gonna fix any of this. This is why we've been telling conservatives, yeah, who are going, oh, why'd you have to be violent? Why'd you have to be so aggressive? Why'd you have to go out in the streets? This is why you gotta respond to, this is why we responded to them with, I'd like, no, we need, we need to like actually like, put real public pressure on them by losing our shit out in the streets, getting on out there, putting thousands of bodies out in the streets and saying, with one voice, enough is enough. We want justice now. This is over. No justice, no fucking peace. We're done with it.
Yeah.
This is the consequence of that, that we've been waiting for. This is, this is the, in a way, vindication of the strategy. Maybe it won't be, maybe this will fail, but in a way, I would say it's still a vindication because then they had to pay. Maybe it won't be, maybe this will fail, but in a way, I would say it's still a vindication, because then they had to pay lip, they, they had to introduce an idea that is actually pretty radical into the national conversation, which is.
And even if it does get watered down, it's, it's still gonna be a lot better than not only what we have now, but also what they would have proposed, have their bed no protest, but a smaller protest.
Yes.
Um, and, uh, with that, I think that's all we should have for this video.
Yes.
Stay safe, everyone. Keep to the streets and, um, but definitely stay safe when you're at the protests.
Yes.
For both the dual threat of the, um, police state and the coronavirus.
Yes, yes, beware, um, beware fascist infiltrators, a Jean Provocateur from the police, and just generally like beware the pigs in blue. Make sure they don't, they don't get to you. I didn't want that to rhyme, but I ended up allowing it to anyways. All right, good night, solidarity.
Good night, America.